Buenos dias, buenos dias. Este escenario público por el Comité de Aire, Transporte, Parques, Turismo, educación superior y el avance de las mujeres, jóvenes y ciudadanos mayores se ha llamado a orden. Hoy es miércoles 19 de octubre y ahora la hora es 8:02 AM. Para recordar, en acordación con la ley del gobierno abierto, se enviaron notificaciones para este escenario el 12 de octubre y nuevamente el 17 de octubre. Además, este escenario fue notificado en el sitio web del comité de la Gua'am. Me acompañaré esta mañana, quiero agradecer a mi miembro del comité, el senador Telo Tai De Guis, Sido Asmasi. Antes de proceder a la discusión, quiero primero proporcionar algunos reglas generales de conducta para aquellos que están presentes. La conducta de este escenario será la siguiente: se presentará un testimonio escrito al comité. Por favor, provee al personal legislativo su testimonio escrito para fotocopia. El testimonio puede ser leído y el testimonio largo debe ser resumido a unos cinco minutos. Aquellos que testifican podrán presentar testimonio escrito o oral. Una vez que hayan terminado, por favor, permanezcan en el cuarto para preguntas y testimonios adicionales, como sea deseado por los miembros del comité. Las preguntas y testimonios estarán confinados a la naturaleza de la agenda. La agenda de hoy es el proyecto número 342-36 LS. El presidente invitará a individuos que se han inscrito para testificar antes de hablar. Individuos, por favor, identifiquen a sí mismos y su posición para el registro. La orden de las preguntas comenzará con el panel de senadores. Así que hasta ahora, el senador Tai De Guis aquí, será el primero en hacer preguntas. La inferencia personal al carácter o motivo de cualquier senador o cualquier individuo testificando no es permitida. Cualquier violación de estas reglas generales de conducta resultará en la remoción del cuarto público. Ahora continuaremos con nuestro tema de agenda, y ese es el proyecto número 342-36 LS, presentado por el senador Joe S. Austin Augustine, Clinton E. Rogel, Mary Camacho Torres, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, V. Anthony Ada, José Pito Terlahe y Frank Blas Jr., un acto para amendar la sección 1203F y 1203.1 de la artículo 2, título 12, del código de Guam anotado, relativo a la Aire Aeronáutica International Airport Authority: contratos Guam para el uso de instalaciones aéreas y propiedades. La nota fiscal para el proyecto fue solicitada el 5 de octubre de 2022 y recibida el 13 de octubre de 2022 y proporcionada a todos los senadores. En este momento, leeré el discurso de patrocinador del senador Joe Austin Augustine, que desafortunadamente no puede estar con nosotros debido a cuestiones personales. Buenos dias, gracias, Madam Presidente, por mantener este escenario sobre el proyecto 342-36. Disculpe no estar presente, ya que estoy en camino para manejar un asunto de familia urgente. El proyecto 342 es un acto relativo a la Aire Aeronáutica International Airport Authority: contrato Guam para el uso de instalaciones aéreas y propiedades. Este proyecto aspira a ayudar mucho a nuestro aeropuerto Guam a levantarse de la pandemia de COVID-19 y permitirle aún más la flexibilidad que necesita para diversificar sus ingresos y expandir las oportunidades para el desarrollo y la inversión en las propiedades aéreas. Para lograr esto, el proyecto 342-36 otorga autoridad al aeropuerto para leasing sus propiedades y instalaciones durante un periodo no excediendo 30 años, con la excepción de contratos de concesión, que son limitados a solo diez años. He oído demasiadas veces que hay partes interesadas que quieren invertir y desarrollar en la propiedad aérea debido a su acceso al campo aéreo para fines de aviación durante un periodo más largo de cinco años, pero están disgustados de hacerlo debido al proceso actual que debe pasar el desarrollador. El proyecto 342 permite que estas partes interesadas sean capaces de recuperar el investir hecho durante un periodo más largo de tiempo. Además, el proyecto 342-36 presenta un camino para el aeropuerto para recuperarse de la pandemia de COVID-19 a través de autorizarlo a desarrollar reglas y regulaciones para la solicitud competitiva, selección y premio de acuerdos de concesión a través del proceso triple A o a través del proceso legislativo. De cualquiera forma, el proceso de desarrollo de estas reglas y regulaciones será transparente y abierto a la discusión pública. Pero el resultado de desarrollar estas reglas y regulaciones se espera dar beneficios al público viajante a través de mejoras y expansiones de ofertas de concesión y beneficios financieros a la aeropuerta. Finalmente, el proyecto 342-36 proporciona al aeropuerto la oportunidad de extender los acuerdos de concesión existentes durante el periodo en el que las concesiones fueron afectadas por la pandemia. Todos sabemos que los aeropuertos en todo el mundo han sido afectados por la pandemia, así que también los negocios que operan en estos aeropuertos tuvieron que soportar la gran reducción en el tráfico aéreo de pasajeros. Autorizar al aeropuerto a extender estos contratos durante hasta tres años ayudará en la continuidad de los servicios de concesión proporcionados al público viajante, pero también permitirá al aeropuerto tiempo para promover reglas y regulaciones para la próxima solicitud competitiva de acuerdos de concesión. Quiero agradecer a mis colegas y co-patrocinadores del proyecto 342-36 por entender los desafíos que enfrentamos nuestro único aeropuerto comercial en Guam y por aceptar que el bien que el proyecto 342-36 hace por el aeropuerto se equivale al mejor bien para la recuperación económica de Guam una vez más, Sido Asmasi. Y ese fue el discurso de patrocinador del senador Joe Austin Augustine sobre el proyecto 342-36. Ahora pasaremos a la testimonial pública. Quiero reconocer en el cuarto hoy al gerente ejecutivo de la Aire Aeronáutica International Airport Authority, el ex senador John Canatas, Sido Asmasi, y te dejaré introducir a tu equipo, pero empezaremos contigo, señor.
Buenos dias, senador Shelton, y gracias por tenernos aquí. Me gustaría introducir a mi jefe, nuestro jefe de la Aire Aeronáutica International Airport Authority, nuestro presidente de la junta, el Sr. Brian Bamba. Conmigo, a su izquierda está nuestro ex gerente ejecutivo, Dr. Ricky Hernandez, y a su izquierda está nuestro consultor aéreo, el Sr. Frank Santos. Para empezar esta mañana, me gustaría darle a nuestro jefe, el presidente de la junta, el Sr. Brian Bamba, y luego seguiría después de él.
Por favor, proceda, Sr. Bamba.
Gracias, JQ. ¿Me escuchas? Buenos dias, presidente Shelton, y gracias, senador July y senador Tai De Guis, por participar hoy. En nombre del Aire Aeronáutico International Airport Authority, GIA, Junto de Directores, les gustaría agradecer por la oportunidad de presentar nuestro testimonio con el apoyo total del proyecto 342-36, que proporciona un cambio en la política favorable al aeropuerto, a sus interesados y al público viajante. Como único aeropuerto civil de Guam, su valor y significado para la economía de Guam y nuestra comunidad no pueden ser exagerados, ya que genera considerables beneficios directos y indirectos económicos para nuestra isla a través de la creación de trabajos, servicios y infraestructura crítica. El proyecto propuesto permite a la GIA considerar el leasing y el desarrollo de la propiedad aérea durante hasta 30 años y las concesiones aéreas durante hasta 10 años. Estos términos de negocios son consistentes en toda la industria aérea y proporcionan oportunidades para maximizar el retorno de las inversiones hechas por la GIA, nuestros socios federales, desarrolladores y interesados. Hace dos meses, tuvimos al asociado administrador de aeropuertos para la FAA, la senadora Griffin en Guam, para celebrar el cortaje de la vela y la abertura de la instalación de rescate de aviones y de combate a fuego, también conocida como ARF, que fue principalmente financiado por dones de la FAA. Como el gobierno federal continúa atraer recursos y fondos en el sector de la transportación, incluyendo los aeropuertos, nos incumple con la capacidad de maximizar tales mejoras de capital financiadas por la FAA al expandir nuestras oportunidades de desarrollo y inversión en los activos aéreos. Además, el gobierno federal ha proporcionado incentivos al sector privado para promover el desarrollo y la inversión en energía renovable, infraestructura sostenible y electrificación. Sin la flexibilidad que proporciona el proyecto 342-36, podemos no poder aprovechar estas oportunidades para mejorar el futuro sostenible del aeropuerto. El impacto de la pandemia de COVID-19 en la industria aérea es un recordatorio de la importancia para todos los aeropuertos de adoptar y ajustar modelos de negocio para lidiar con las crisis inesperadas. A medida que la economía en Guam y la industria aérea continúan recuperándose en esta región, queremos posicionarnos para aprovechar las oportunidades que se han presentado a través de interés en inversiones aeronáuticas de gran escala en el aeropuerto. Con este cambio en la legislación, la GIA estará en una mejor posición para promover, desarrollar y captar estas oportunidades para el desarrollo de la infraestructura y la inversión para maximizar la diversificación de los ingresos en el aeropuerto. Gracias por la oportunidad de presentar este testimonio, y espero tu apoyo continuo. Sinceramente, Brian Bamba, presidente, Junto de Directores, GIA.
Muchas gracias, presidente Bamba.
Gracias. Buenos dias, senador Shelton, presidente de la junta del Comité de Aire, Transporte, Parques, Turismo, Educación Superior y el Avance de las Mujeres, Jóvenes y Ciudadanos Mayores. También buenos dias al parlamento de Teresa July, que está aquí, y también al senador Telo Tai De Guis, que está aquí esta mañana. Gracias por la oportunidad de presentar este testimonio sobre el proyecto 342-36 y un acto relativo a los contratos de la Aire Aeronáutica International Airport Authority: contrato Guam para el uso de instalaciones aéreas y propiedades. Soy John M. Canata, el gerente ejecutivo de la Aire Aeronáutica International Airport Authority. El Aire Aeronáutico International Airport Authority, o GIA, expresa el apoyo total al proyecto 342-36. Por medio del背景, la GIA fue creada, según la ley pública, como una corporación pública y una autonomía instrumentalista del gobierno de Guam. Ha operado como único aeropuerto civil de Guam durante los últimos 46 años con el propósito de operar y mantener aeropuertos y instalaciones relacionadas para fines de aviación civil en Guam. La misión de la GIA es asegurar la seguridad y la seguridad del público viajante, mantener un nivel superior y confiable de servicios aéreos y apoyar el desarrollo de servicios aéreos y instalaciones que son integrales para el crecimiento económico de la isla. Como muchos de ustedes saben, la GIA es parte del sistema aéreo nacional y como parte de este sistema debe ser accesible para servir las necesidades de los negocios, el público viajante, las emergencias y otros usos. También sirve como un aeropuerto alternativo en caso de diversiones de aviones, emergencias y, por lo tanto, es requerido abrir 24 horas al día, siete días a la semana. El aeropuerto sirve como motor económico de Guam y proporciona servicios críticos a nuestros negocios y a las comunidades locales que servimos. A lo largo de los años, la GIA ha iniciado programas de mejoras de capital significativos e inversiones en infraestructura para satisfacer las demandas crecientes de aviación y turismo en Guam. Desde el viejo terminal en 1982 hasta la instalación de la instalación en 1996 y la reciente completación del corredor internacional de llegada tercero, la nueva instalación de rescate de aviones y de combate a fuego, y las expansiones y rehabilitaciones de los caminos y estaciones de taxi, GIA ha invertido más de 900 millones de dólares en nuestro único aeropuerto comercial. Como todos saben, la GIA es obligada tanto por estatutos locales como federales y funciones bajo el principio común de que los aeropuertos operan como una empresa financiera y autonómica y es requerida generar su propio ingreso a través de los gastos operativos pagados por las airlines, los dueños, los pasajeros y los usuarios de las instalaciones y servicios aéreos para pagar el costo de la operación y mantenimiento del aeropuerto. Por lo tanto, cualquier posibilidad de mejorar la capacidad de la GIA de generar ingresos aeronáuticos y no aeronáuticos es paramounte para la continua recuperación y éxito de la GIA. El proyecto 342-36 proporciona tal autoridad para la GIA para lograr un futuro mucho más financiariamente sostenible y resiliente para el único aeropuerto comercial de Guam. La legislación propuesta es perspectiva adelante. proporciona un camino para la GIA para diversificar aún más y asegurar sus ingresos para ayudar a resistir los choques regionales, nacionales y internacionales a la industria aérea. Pero antes de hablar sobre los aspectos perspectivos y los meritos del proyecto 342-36, quiero discutir exactamente lo que la GIA ha experimentado en los últimos dos años para poner en contexto la importancia del proyecto 342-36 para el futuro financiero de la GIA. Es importante mirar al pasado para que pueda ayudarte a informar al futuro. Me gustaría que el Dr. Ricky Hernandez le dé esta visión.
Buenos dias, senadores, y gracias por la oportunidad. Mi nombre es Ricky Hernandez, el ex gerente ejecutivo de la Aire Aeronáutica International Airport Authority. Gracias por su presencia aquí, y voy a continuar con nuestro gerente ejecutivo, Canatas, testimonio. Así que como todos sabemos, el nuevo coronavirus de 2019, también conocido como la pandemia de COVID-19, ha afectado a todos los aeropuertos y la industria aérea general en todo el mundo. La pandemia de COVID-19 obligó a los gobiernos de todo el mundo a imponer restricciones de viaje obstructivas y requisitos para curvar el spread del virus, de los cuales tanto la pandemia como esas restricciones y requisitos han llevado a la enorme reducción en el tráfico de pasajeros. El Consejo Internacional de Aeropuertos, también conocido como ACI, estimó que el impacto de la crisis de COVID-19 en los ingresos aéreos globalmente fue aproximadamente 265 billones de dólares entre 2020 y 2022. ACI aún estima que la pandemia de COVID-19 había costado específicamente a los aeropuertos de EE. UU. aproximadamente 40 billones entre marzo de 2020 y marzo de 2022. Y solo para ser claro, eso son ingresos aéreos y no ingresos aéreos, porque hay un conjunto de datos separados para eso también. Pero específicamente para la GIA, la pandemia de COVID-19 ha reducido el flujo normal de los ingresos aéreos de los aeropuertos entre los años fiscales 2020 y 2022 a un ritmo de más de 130 millones de dólares. Esta pérdida de ingresos gravemente afectó a los requisitos operativos de los aeropuertos y condujo a la necesidad de controlar el coste, la creatividad y la colaboración para abordar este desastre mientras permanecen seguros y seguros en función de los ingresos del público viajante. Y creo que tenemos un gráfico para reflejar, para que podamos visualizar cómo se ve la pérdida de ingresos y cómo los fondos federales han sido capaces de abordar una parte de eso. Y así como pueden ver en las diapositivas delante de ustedes, tenemos una comparación de los ingresos totales del aeropuerto entre el año fiscal 2019 y el año fiscal 2022, sin audiciones. Y así en el año fiscal 2019, que fue uno de nuestros años de bandera en el aeropuerto, teníamos ingresos totales de un poco más de 78 millones de dólares. En el año fiscal 2020, eso redujo a, eso fue un impacto parcial del COVID-19. Eso es un ingreso total de 47.9 millones de dólares. Y en el año fiscal 2021 fue un impacto total without any semblance of recovery, y eso fue ingresos totales de 24.8 millones en 2021. Para el año fiscal 2022, hemos visto alguna recuperación que comenzó un poco antes del verano. Y así tenemos un ingreso, un ingreso total estimado de 31.4 millones. Y así si se mueve a la siguiente diapositiva, la forma en que calculamos los 130 millones de pérdidas es simplemente haciendo una simple análisis de comparar qué era el año fiscal 2019 previo a COVID-19 y ni siquiera asumiendo ningún porcentaje de crecimiento y solo mostrando a ustedes aquí que así es como calculamos la pérdida de ingresos aquí en el testimonio. Y así a medida que avanzamos en la siguiente diapositiva, recibimos fondos federales de la Ley de Cares, CRISA y ARPA, y eso llenó de alrededor de 59.5 millones, pero todavía sufren todavía una pérdida de ingresos de 72 millones de dólares. Y así voy a continuar con el testimonio escrito. Gracias por las diapositivas. Y así, para abarcar este desastre, el aeropuerto hizo lo siguiente: contenía y redujo las inversiones operativas y mantenientes, o O&amp;M, donde sea posible. Esto llevó al año fiscal 2021, el año completo en el que el aeropuerto fue afectado por la pandemia de COVID-19. Nos llevó a tener reducido los gastos O&amp;M a lo menor en más de una década. Refinanciamos y reestructuramos el deuda existente con la aprobación de este organismo, el comité de la Gua'am, y el enacceso por el gobernador Lillian Guerrero. La ley pública 35-137 autorizó al aeropuerto a refinanciar y reestructurar sus deudas existentes para lograr el descanso de las tasas de interés, así como la reducción de el servicio de deuda para compensar algunas de las pérdidas de los ingresos debido a la pandemia de COVID-19. El aeropuerto utilizó este autorización en ambos años fiscales 21 y 22 para reducir los pagos de servicio de deuda y para lograr el descanso de las tasas de interés entre los años más afectados de la pandemia de COVID-19, los años fiscales 2021, hasta el año fiscal 2024. Lo tercero que hicimos fue extender el uso de fondos operativos federales. Así que a través de la reducción de los gastos O&amp;M y la reducción de los pagos de servicio de deuda, el aeropuerto pudo extender el uso de los fondos federales otorgados a través de la Ley de Resistencia y Salud de la COVID-19, que es también conocida como la Ley de Cares, la Ley de Aparición y Reparación adicional de la respuesta a la COVID-19, también conocida como CRISA, y la Ley de Rescatación Americana, también conocida como ARPA, en la que el aeropuerto recibió reembolsos federales por las inversiones operativas totaling 42.5 millones. Además, el gobernador Lillian Guerrero proporcionó un 17 millones de dólares en fondos de recuperación fiscale local y estatal, especialmente como resultado de los impactos del Delta y de la variante de Omicron relacionados con el tiempo de recuperación, que esperábamos recuperarse en el año fiscal 22, pero esas variantes obviamente retrasaron el inicio de la recuperación este verano. Así que aunque el aeropuerto recibió 59.5 millones en fondos operativos federales, fue realmente a través de eso y la estricta diligencia financiera y gestión de deuda creativa que fuimos capaces de superar la pérdida de 130 millones de dólares en ingresos. E incluso mientras operaba en este entorno financiero, el aeropuerto aún logró ser la primera entidad en Guam para lograr la estampa de "Trabajo de Aterrizaje y Turismo Mundial" en el verano de 2020, así como uno de los primeros aeropuertos en la región para lograr la acreditación de salud del aeropuerto ACI a través de ajustes de prácticas para promover el transporte sano, incluir cosas como tecnología sin toque, instalación de luces ultravioletas en nuestras unidades de manejo aéreo, escaneo térmico, etc. Además, durante estos tiempos desafiantes, el aeropuerto logró estar en estado de auditoría de bajo riesgo por primera vez desde que ese estado fue perdido en el año fiscal 2018. Esto se logró garantizando tres años consecutivos de audiciones limpias. Pero hacemos la pregunta, ¿por qué mirar hacia atrás en esta historia reciente? Es porque creemos que nos ayudará a informar de lo que podríamos tener que hacer de manera diferente mañana para mejor preparar al aeropuerto para cualquier golpe futuro a la industria aérea. La pandemia de COVID-19 ha sido un stark recordatorio de la importancia del aeropuerto, de nuestro aeropuerto, de tener la capacidad de diversificar sus ingresos y desarrollar sus propiedades en apoyo a la autonómica financiera. Y el proyecto 342-36 construye sobre la mentalidad de que un aeropuerto resiliente para el pueblo de Guam llevará a una economía más resiliente. Y una forma de construir resiliencia es diversificar los ingresos y aumentar la actividad económica en la propiedad aérea, con prioridad en actividades aeronáuticas, porque el único lugar en el que alguien querría construir un hangar es realmente en el campo aéreo, y, subordinariamente, actividades no aeronáuticas. Con eso, solo voy a devolverlo a nuestro gerente ejecutivo y gracias por la oportunidad de leer una parte de este testimonio.
Gracias, Dr. Ricky Hernandez. En extensiones de los términos de leasing de instalaciones y propiedades, la sección dos y tres del proyecto 342-36 proporciona la autoridad a la GIA para entrar en contratos, incluyendo, sin limitaciones, leasing, acuerdos de concesión, asociaciones públicas-privadas, licencias y permisos para el uso de instalaciones y propiedades aéreas y para propósitos aéreos y/o actividades relacionadas con visitantes durante un periodo no excediendo 30 años, con la excepción de acuerdos de concesión donde ese periodo no debe exceder diez años. Al igual que la ley pública 35-114, que autorizó a la Universidad de Guam a contratar y leasing propiedad durante hasta 30 años, la GIA busca la autoridad similar para aumentar la capacidad de generar ingresos aeronáuticos y no aeronáuticos y para lograr la mucha necesaria flexibilidad para el desarrollo económico en el aeropuerto. Esta autoridad proporcionará a los potenciales dueños y desarrolladores la capacidad de obtener la necesaria financiación comercial y un término para amortizar completamente sus inversiones iniciales y lograr un retorno de inversiones para mejoras planificadas. Como comparación, según mi ley pública 20-84, aumenta los términos de leasing de tierras públicas durante hasta 40 años, más una extensión de 15 años, por un total de 55 años. El proyecto 342-36 propone autorizar semianos similares para las instalaciones y propiedades aéreas, pero durante un periodo de solo hasta 30 años. Además, la GIA opera en un entorno altamente regulado, incluyendo el proceso para contratar y leasing instalaciones y propiedades aéreas. Como receptor de los programas de asistencia financiera del gobierno federal, la GIA es un aeropuerto obligado federal y debe aceptar ciertas obligaciones y aseguraciones. Estas aseguraciones se recolectan de la legislación federal, consejos circulares, órdenes ejecutivas y reglas de aviación federales, y la GIA debe cumplir con tales aseguraciones que se relacionan con el desarrollo, leasing y operación de tierras y edificios aéreos. tales aseguraciones incluyen la preservación de derechos y el poder que no leasing o acuerdo no leasing o acuerdo limita a la GIA a proporcionar los servicios de un aeropuerto de uso público y que no se transfera o se dispare sin la aprobación de la FAA. Primero y antes, las actividades aeronáuticas son determinadas como prioridad para el uso de instalaciones y propiedades aéreas. Además, la mayoría de la tierra de la GIA disponible para leasing o desarrollo fue adquirida a través del acto de renuncia de la parte federal a la GIA como parte de la relocation y encerramiento de la estación aérea naval de Ganya. Todas las propiedades son requeridas para ser usadas para propósitos aéreos, lo que significa usos que están directamente relacionados con las operaciones aeronáuticas, sirven como tierra de amortiguamiento de ruido o generan ingresos que contribuyen a la autonómica financiera del aeropuerto. La mayoría de la tierra aérea también es prioritaria para expansiones de terminal y caminos, estaciones de taxi, zonas de protección de caminos y actividades aeronáuticas. El estatuto actual limita la autoridad de la GIA a contratar y leasing instalaciones y propiedades aéreas y propiedades durante cinco años, a menos que un contrato de excepción de un periodo sea seguido, lo que hace que muchos dueños interesados y desarrolladores eviten entrar en proyectos de desarrollo aéreo, por ejemplo, hangars, operaciones de base fija, áreas de servicio de renta de automóvil consolidada, instalaciones de catering en vuelo, cargos y almacenamiento. Desde el enacceso de tal limitación, la GIA no ha tenido una leasing a largo plazo de ninguna instalación o propiedad más de un periodo de cinco años. Con las regulaciones federales y los requisitos ya en place relativos a las instalaciones y propiedades aéreas, el proyecto 342-36 proporciona una vía para el desarrollo y la inversión en la propiedad aérea, de ahí diversificando los ingresos aéreos y expandiendo las actividades económicas en Guam y en la región. El desarrollo y el desarrollo de una inversión en instalaciones y propiedades aéreas y la capacidad de la GIA de obtener su uso máximo y mejor de propiedad también contribuirá a la promoción de la aviación y otras industrias y crear más trabajos para nuestra isla. Autorizando para promover reglas y regulaciones para generar contratos a través de la AAL o enacceso a la ley, la sección tres del proyecto 342-36 autoriza a la GIA a establecer reglas y regulaciones para la solicitud, selección y premio de acuerdos de concesión en acuerdo con la ley de adjudicación administrativa o por enacceso a la ley. Las leyes de adquisición actuales, encontradas en el capítulo cinco, título cinco, del código de Guam anotado, son específicas al adquisición de gobierno para contratos de excedencia. La ley de adquisición y las regulaciones de adquisición están diseñadas, entre otras cosas, para maximizar la extensión completa práctica, el valor de compra de fondos públicos del territorio y para favorecer el proceso de apoderamiento seco competitivo para obtener el menor costo de un responsable y responsable y un arder responsable. Contratos para servicios como la renta de automóvil, comida y bebidas y acuerdos de venta, por otro lado, son contratos generando ingresos y reglas y regulaciones que regulan cómo la GIA solicita competitivamente para tales acuerdos de concesión es necesario. Además, la sección tres del proyecto 342-36 proporciona que todos los otros contratos para el uso de instalaciones y propiedades aéreas sean en acuerdo con las políticas y procedimientos de la Junta de Directores de la GIA, con cualquier adopción de ella siendo solo después de un aviso público de 30 días y un periodo de comentario. Ahora es el momento crucial para planear la solicitud competitiva de acuerdos de concesión en el aeropuerto. Esto es porque con la completación de una operación completa de This is because with the completion of a full operation of the IAC, the airport has taken down the gray barriers that we are required to separate TSA-screened and non-screened passengers, and has opened up concession opportunities throughout the terminal concourse. As GIA management, we are all aware of the need to improve concession offerings at the airport for our passengers and other airport users. Bill 342-36 provides a pathway to do just that. As an example, our food and beverage concessions are currently operating on short-term leases, short-term lease extensions, which negates the ability for companies to invest heavily in improvements. With a clear path laid by the promulgation of rules and regulations for the competitive solicitation of concession agreements, GIA will be able to finally and substantially improve upon the offerings of food and beverage concessions, as well as all other concessions opportunities at the airport. Lastly, Section 4 of Bill 342-36 provides the GIA with authority to negotiate extension of its current concession agreements for up to an additional three years from the end of the then-current term, subject to GIA Board of Directors' approval. This authorization is not uncommon in the airport industry, as other airports in the United States, as well as around the world, have similarly extended concession agreements due to the impacts of COVID-19 pandemic. Similarly, Section 4 proposes the same. Additionally, from a marketplace and commercial standpoint, engaging in a competitive solicitation process for concessions before we have substantially recovered from the impacts of COVID-19 pandemic may not generate the most advantageous and favorable positions for GIA. Furthermore, given that promulgating rules and regulations via the administrative adjudication law or by enactment into law for the competitive solicitation of concession agreements and performing the competitive solicitation based on those rules and regulations is expected to take time, this period coincides with GIA's recovery timeframe. Madam Chair and Honorable Senators, now is a critical time in the history of Guam's only commercial airport. As we continue on this runway to recovery, we must ensure that we do not lose momentum and that we also prepare for the future economic potential for Guam. Bill 342-36 provides a pathway to achieve that economic potential for Guam. I also want to add that the FAA has repealed Bill 342-36 and has no objections to the proposed measure, as it generally promotes the airport to be self-sustaining. I've enclosed a copy of their letter with this testimony. So in summary, I believe that GIA has proven itself to be a good steward of its limited resources, especially during COVID-19 pandemic, having achieved low-risk auditee status and clean audit opinions, multiple health-related accolades for our response to the pandemic, and reductions in O and M and debt service costs while still maintaining and operating the airport 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Bill 342-36 is forward-looking. It is forward-thinking. It provides a pathway for GIA recovery, but also enables us to harden our finances through revenue diversification while expanding economic opportunities for both the airport and Guam. Once again, on behalf of GIA, we thank you for this opportunity to testify, and we look forward to working with this committee to advance policies in support of continued airport development. Thank you, Madam Chair and Senators.
Thank you very much.
I just noticed Senator Mary Torres came in and also Senator Clint Rigel. Thank you for your presence.
Thank you very much. Yes, I'd like to recognize my colleagues, Speaker Therese Terlachy, Committee Member Senator Mary Torres, and Senator Clint Rigel. So just my colleagues for being with us this morning. I'd like to also state for the record that we've received other written testimony to be added to the committee report. We have testimony in support from Asia-Pacific Airlines Chairman of the Board, Mr. George Chu, from Aviation Concepts, Terry Habek, CEO, in support, from Mr. John Stewart, President of Micronesian Air Cargo Services LLC in Skydive Guam, in support. Testimony from Mr. Matt Johnson, Managing Director of JMC Guam Inc. Testimony in support from DeWong Chen, CEO of Lodi Duty-Free Guam LLC. That's all. We'll now begin with questions, or were you going to testify? Okay. So if there's no one else here to give testimony, we'll keep this panel up here for questions from our senators this morning. We'll begin with Speaker Terlachy. Senator Telotidegui.
Good morning to my colleagues, and most especially, good morning to the airport who's here and the board members that are also here today. I appreciate your time this morning on this really rainy, rainy morning. And just to let you know, I know some was curious why I'm sitting way over here, because it's a lot warmer on the end than it is in the middle. We sat here for five hours last night, and it was freezing, so I thought I'd play it smart and sit on the edge here. You know, I greatly appreciate this legislation. As you guys know, in the 35th Guam Legislature, I introduced a bill particularly to increase the opportunity for our agencies to extend from five years further to 10 years, actually. And I noticed that this legislation is to 30 years. That was a comment made actually by Gida, which tried to increase the tenure that I put in my bill to 20 years. So there was some kind of compromise. So would there have been any resistance or a good reason why we would not change the year from 30 years to 20 years? Mr. Director, or anyone?
Well, Senator, thank you for that question, and my chair and also my deputy can also add on to it. But yes, there's a lot of folks that are trying to invest in our airport's facilities, and the airport's, the types of investment that they're trying to do, like for example, Air Vietnam, that recently just visited us or has contacted us and has given us a memo or a letter of interest. They want to invest in a MRO, a maintenance, recovery, and operations hangar. And that hangar is going to cost a minimum of $280 million. And there's no way that they're going to get their return on investment, $280 million in 20 years. 30 years, 30 years is acceptable to them. Even up to 50 years is even better, but we're trying to get to what we have already, like what YOG has, and go with the 30 years. But for folks that want to invest in that type of investment, 20 years is not as acceptable to them for them to invest.
Or be able to recover their expenses. When it comes to investments, opportunities for the airport, since I introduced the bill in the 35th, that was 2019, I believe, when I first introduced it, I was given a sheet of potential opportunities for the airport. Do you happen to have that list? It was given to me during the time airport actually submitted to me, and it was showing several companies that were willing to invest. Do you have any kind of listing of those who are interested in renting from the airport but won't do it because of the timeline?
Yeah, I think, to be clear, when we speak with developers and what I've been, you know, in talking with the team, because obviously I haven't been here, haven't been at the airport longer than, less than three years. But in terms of developers that are interested in the airport and developing at the airport, we do explain to them that the limit is five years, but then there's obviously an exceptional term contract process, and that's what really discourages them in terms of how that process may work. And so when we do get interest, that in of itself, in terms of explaining that process, we don't get a lot of information other than their interest. But there are some that provide a little bit more detail. So I know that the executive manager had mentioned that hangar facilities, and hangar facilities cost a lot of money, building from the ground up or renovating the existing hangars that are on the south ramp of the airport. But we've also seen in-flight catering kitchens that were interested. I mean, I think even a pet hospital was interested as well to build, you know, obviously for aeronautical reasons. I think there was also, you know, freight forwarding, there are things like hardware retail that was also of interest, which may not necessarily be aeronautical in nature, but depending on where they were interested in, they just expressed interest. But that also was an issue, as well as just other fixed base operations. So I mean, a lot of the interest is aeronautical in nature, and it's really simply because they can't, they cannot build anywhere else other than with access to the airfield. It's the only place on Guam they would want to build, so if they feel that there's impediments to it, then they may just, then the economic activity is essentially lost, so.
Thank you, Dr. Hernandez, and Mr. Director as well. I'm just going to name a few that I have. These are still potential investors who want to rent at the airport. I have a list here with BBB investing of about, almost, it says here, $1.5 million, needing a lease for 20 years. I have DHL at $1.4 million, needing lease 10 years plus. CTSI for $4 million, looking at a 25-year investment. I'm looking at Pacair Properties at $25 million investment for 50-year lease term. And MSA as 21 years at $1.5. IBC, $2 million at five years. ITNE, $4 million at 15 years. And then Cortech here at 4.5 at 30 years. Are these still potential opportunities for, I mean, are these people who are still interested in wanting to rent from the airport?
Senator, I think if this were to move to 30 years, all those folks that have shown interest, I think they will be definitely there, especially our vision for the airport of expanding our air cargo services and our cargo facilities is going to be there. So definitely, I think that has high potential.
Okay. Yeah, I think this is important data that we received, just to show the ability of what the airport can generate on their own, and especially with the losses that they've incurred. And that brings me to the concession. When you mentioned earlier about the concessions and being able to extend it, the renewal for three years, you know, it's understandable that many of them have been at the airport during a time where no business was generated, you know, and they were good enough to stay where they were, you know, to hold off as long as they can for a couple of years, regardless of, you know, their overhead. Of course, the federal government came in, and you came into play as good stewards to provide a relief on the rent, you know, moving forward. But at this time, they need to find a way to recover their losses, because of course they weren't able to get what they intended for. However, you know, it does say 30 days, which, I was just wondering why in this section here, for this term, you're saying the 30-day calendar days for public comment period. The law requires YOG, and you mentioned that earlier, to conduct a public hearing, you know, even with their 30-year lease, to allow for 60 calendar days for a public comment before executing a lease. And you're requesting here for 30 days. Is there a reason why only 30 versus 60?
Yes. Senator, I can answer that question. So I think the portion of the bill that you might be referring to is, if I may clarify, page six, and that's lines 17 to 18. And so what the bill is requesting, or at least authorizing us, the airport to do is to, under that section, this is related to agreements between the airport authority, as well as any other party, for the use of airport facilities and properties. And so in order to, we kind of bifurcate this, and so for concession agreements and the solicitation for that, we're requesting for, to go through the AAA process or by enactment into law for the rules and regulations for soliciting, selecting, and awarding for concessions. And then for non-concessions, obviously, leases at the airport that are non-concession-related, we have here that requesting for authority for the Board of Directors through the adoption of policies and procedures, that there be a comment period of 30 days for that purpose, for non-concession-related uses of airport facilities and properties.
So yeah, let's do the AAA process. So once again, you're requesting 30 days versus 60 days. Why, I mean, didn't really get the reasoning why you wanted to go shorter, you know?
I don't think we have any problem with 60 days. I think it's just a matter of what is, you know, what the body is willing to accept, I think, in terms of the number of days, 30 or 60 of a comment period. I think we're amenable to that.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Hernandez. I appreciate that. I mean, you guys are bringing, you're bringing up the YOG scenario, and so if you're going to follow that, you might as well follow it all the way. Be no different. There is something else I had with regards to, oh, hold on. Okay, I lost my train of thought on this one, but I'll come back if I have any more questions, if I can, Madam Chair. I have a couple more questions, but I just want to formulate it together, so if I can have that opportunity to come back. So I thank you so much so far. It looks good. However, we have to be diligent. I know there's opportunities for you to actually get leases for 30 years if you want by going through a process at the legislature. I mean, that's why it's been in place, but the problem is that you get business people, investors, investing millions of dollars, they don't have a trust in the legislature. And our comeback on this would be that the legislature wants trust in our agencies to make sure they do it correctly and that everything is transparent and accountable, and transparency is the key. I mean, the intentions of the airport is very good, but being transparent is even more important, you know, not just this body, but the people of Guam as well. So every opportunity we can find in this bill that provides that transparency, and I have no problem, because I've been advocating for the extension of these five years for two terms now, trying to push it forward. So I appreciate your time again, and I'll yield to my other colleagues and have the opportunity to come back.
Thank you, Senator Tadegui. I also want to recognize Senator Brown for joining us this morning. Move on to Senator Torres for questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning, everyone. It's a pleasure to see everyone here this morning for this public hearing. I want to direct this question to Mr. Canata, but anyone on the panel can actually answer. In your testimony on page six, at the top of page six, it reads, additionally, from a marketplace and commercial standpoint, engaging in a competitive solicitation process for concessions before we have substantially recovered from the impacts of COVID-19 pandemic may not generate the most advantageous and favorable position for the GIA. And it goes on, furthermore, given that promulgating rules and regulations via the administrative adjudication law or by enactment into law for the competitive solicitation of concession agreements and performing the competitive solicitation based on those rules and regs is expected to take time, comma, this period coincides with GIA's recovery timeframe. I believe you're referring to page five of the bill, Section 3, which amends Section 1203.1 regarding agreements between the authority and other parties. And I believe your statement specifically is with regard to page six of the bill, beginning And I believe your statement specifically is with regard to page six of the bill, beginning at line eight, which reads, I, with regard to concession agreements, rules and regulations for the solicitation selection, and award of concession agreements established in accordance with the administrative adjudication law or by enactment into law. Concessions include, but are not limited to retail, specialty retail, food and beverage, advertising, currency exchange, car rentals, and parking. My question is, if, if you're testifying that it coincides with your recovery timeframe and the whole gist of this bill is to enable you to diversify your markets and to make the, the investment climate more palatable for prospective investors, what is it that that we can do then to remedy this, this, the fact that it coincides with your, your timeframe? What is it exactly that is your ask by testifying in that regard? Because I'm just trying to find what it is that, that you're suggesting we should do with, say, line eight through 13 of page six, if that's what you're specifically commenting on?
So basically, for, for this time period, right, the, the market right now, because we're still on a recovery mode, if someone were to, if, if a, a vendor or a bidder were to bid for any kind of concessions right now at the airport, because we're still on recovery mode, we're not going to get the best bang for our buck. That the, the, probably the bids will be so low that it's not, it's not as positive for the airport. And so that, the three years that we're looking at, for us to, up to three years for, for concessions, and also going through the, putting together our rules and regs to coincide with that, gives us that time for the recovery to, to, to take place and possibly, once the recovery period is, is done, that we'll get better investments or better bids for the airport. Maybe Dr. Hernandez or maybe even the Chair can come on to, add on to this.
Yeah, and I'll just add too, Senator, thank you for the question. Like, like the executive manager was saying, and I think mentioned in the testimony, other airports have done similar things related to COVID recovery. They've provided extensions to their concessions. And so in terms of our concessions currently, we want to match that time period of needing to go create and promulgate rules and regulations. And so, you know, there are different studies that say when full recovery will be achieved, and most of them typically say around 2024. And so in terms of being able to get to that point, we're requesting to be able to extend all of our concessions that are, that are available so that we could kind of bridge that gap. And so I think with regards to the sections of the bill that you are referring to, which was page six, line eight, that's the, that is the authorization for us to go through a process for rules and regulations. And then if you go to section four, that is the authorization to extend, negotiate extensions for our concession agreements for up to an, up to a period of three years and no longer. And so I think in terms of concessions, it's good to know that, note that concessions, they pay a premium for space because they are revenue generating, and so they pay, obviously, a lot more than our regular concessions in the terminal building. And so in terms of the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic on these concessions that pay a considerable amount more than the regular tenant, you know, in term, being able to provide additional timeframe to, like our other Senator mentioned, to recover the losses that they may have experienced during the pandemic. And similar to what a lot of U.S. airports and a lot of airports in the region have done, they've extended up to a period of two to three years.
Thank you for that. So essentially, because when I, when it's first read that way, it, it almost, it bleeds into section four, actually, and now I see it. And so the, the concern about, about being fair and giving, being given fair opportunity to bid may be an argument for those looking to come in, but I think, given the fact that, that it will require time to promulgate the rules and regs, that the extension is, is really the only way to ensure that there is a continuity of services with the concession agreements. That was the, the tie-in that I was, was trying to establish when I asked that question because there's, there's always a, actually, we hope, in best-case scenario, we, there is a desire for people to invest and that there is great interest in people coming into the airport, and that would be the best-case scenario. But given the fact that absent rules and regs, there is no way to ensure that you can fill those spaces. So the only way to continue this, to have the spaces occupied with tenants to generate revenue for the airport is to extend it. So I, I fully understand then the bleeding and why that was there. Perhaps it was taken out of context, and I was reading it in its pure form. And, and so it was good to remind us of the, the correlation between section three and section four. And that was the, that was the fix to section three and, and how that is an impediment to the continuity of, of, of a complete tenant portfolio at the airport. But I just want to say thank you. I think that this was long overdue. Many of the struggles we've had, as I recall, is the fact that you couldn't get people to commit to five years because the return of investment was not practicable for any investor with a, a large investment commitment to the airport. So I full, I, I, I fully support this bill, obviously, as coming in as one of the, the top three cosponsors of it, and wish you all the best, as always. Sidoos Masi.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you very much, Senator Torres. Senator Brown?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and certainly good morning to all of you from the Airport Authority. I think we understand the, the significance and importance of the ability of GIAA to be able to lease longer periods of time, and we appreciate all that. I don't think there's an argument against that. What I do have concern with, and because of experience, is, you know, they say when the contracts, you know, these contracts come down to the legislature, it's a political process. The difference between those of you sitting on this side of the aisle is the people don't get to directly decide your position. They do get to decide mine and the other members of the legislature. They have direct access to determining our future should we desire to stay in office. The problem we're not talking about, that the government has had a traditional history of, is the misuse and abuse of the authority. Having gone through YTK, and yes, it was at the port, but it's another situation of where you have a private entity who decided that they had access to port property, and they were very vicious about it. We spent hundreds and thousands of people's money to fight that case, which ultimately the Supreme Court determined was not legal because of one critical element. It was not legal because Guam Legislature never authorized the contract after many, 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 many years of legal fights and very high-paid attorneys, obviously, that made hundreds of thousands of dollars on both sides of the aisle. It's that one thing that protected the interests of the people, so much so that that private interest felt that if the port could not pay them the money owed on a decision that they had, that they could access and control port property, and then the people of Guam would end up having to lease that property back from them. Can you imagine leasing a pier? Every time you move cargo over the pier, having to pay a private interest because you're bringing cargo into Guam? It's very possible, guys. Legally, it is possible, assuming they could have won their argument. Fortunately, we stayed persistent in spite of the fact we were accused by this legislature because our governor at the time happened to be a relative of the interests that was challenging us, that we would settle. We never settled, and we fought it all the way to the bitter end. And fortunately, the Supreme Court came down with a decision before this current administration, which you're a member of, wanted to settle public money. And that's the real issue, is do we trust you? Do the people of Guam trust you? Because there's too much interest out there, and not all of it is good interest. A lot of people know they want to make the best of interest in investing their money. Of course they would. That's their money. I can totally understand that. But do I trust you? No. Do I trust you to give you a 30-year authority? No. Only because we're not to the part yet where we see a clean track record. And that's where the concern is, is because unfortunately, there are public officials and individuals in position of authority that have a tendency to misuse their power because they listen to external interest that's floating out there, that's very influential. That's why you can end up with general managers that sign contracts for their relatives and their siblings and other kind of nonsense that go on that sometimes never got to the light of day publicly, because people in authority unfortunately abuse their authority, including people that get elected. But at least the people of Guam get to decide what they want to do with me. So I'm a little more cautious when we're talking about long-term interests of public asset. What you do for your private asset within the law is your business. What you do of public asset, I have a little more concern about because I've seen the abuse. And I've also seen the abuse of some businesses because they are dealing with the government who think the government is incapable or incompetent. Sometimes they just don't pay their leases. And then they drag you to court with their high-paid attorneys and challenge you on that. And again, the people of Guam continue to pay. So while I may not have a problem extending it, maybe a little longer, maybe because as time goes on and we now, you know, hopefully we'll get an Attorney General that's going to be more active and engaged with regards to government corruption and public officials that would be more engaged with regards to government corruption, and people are not fearful, which is a real reality out there. A lot of people don't talk, including those in government agencies, because they fear retaliation. They fear harassment, but they know what's going on. So if I'm going to believe you guys are all above board and it's all good, then we can go home. But I don't believe that. Time and unfortunately, experience has shown me otherwise. Doesn't mean you guys aren't clean, maybe you are. But I don't know that I want to take that chance on a 30-year lease agreement, because at least when it comes here, it has the ultimate level of public scrutiny and review. And if you're not able to do that, then hey, how serious are you about your investment? If everything's on the up and up, what's the problem? Was it seeing the light of day? I'm going to ask you that, Mr. Canata, as a general manager of our, I'm sorry, I don't know your respective title, you might have sort of a different title at the airport, but what's your response to that?
I think, Senator, you're, that you're definitely entitled to, to what you stand on, but I'm saying here, this, this, this management team, this board, our integrity is definitely up to par. And if, if you, you see it with, with our audits, FAA continuously monthly, they, on a monthly basis, they, they, they are tracking our processes at, at the airport. So there's, there's checks and balances, especially at GIA when things are happening up there. So we're definitely consistently being put on the, on the, the microscope as far as our practices at the airport. So I definitely, I can't speak for previous, previous administrations or previous management, but definitely this management team here, we are up to par with our, as far as our integrity is concerned.
And what authority does FAA have over your contracts of your, your, your properties? What authority do they have over any lease agreements you have on your properties? If any.
Senator, if I, Senator, if I could, if I could add too, the FAA, obviously, the airport's a highly regulated operation. The FAA has specific grant assurances that regulate a lot of the airport activities and the airport development.
I understand that, please. I, I'm not naive of that.
No, no.
I appreciate that. What authority specifically with regards to your lease agreements? What involvement does FAA have?
Well, if there was any non-aeronaut, as an example, if there's any non-aeronautical development projects, we would obviously require them to take a look at those because aeronautical activities.
What legal authority do they have over any of your lease agreements?
Authority over lease?
Senator, if I could respond to that? As a recipient, recipient of federal funds, we are a public-use airport, and especially with respect to aeronautical activities.
I got all that. What, I'm asking a specific question. I, I got it. I've had enough years to hear the briefing on the airport. I got all that. I'm specifically asking with regards to lease agreements.
So the grant agreement provides the FAA authority or for us to comply with all regulations that the FAA imposes. And one example is Ricky, the deputy, indicated non-aeronautical leases. The FAA requires us to lease those properties at fair market value based on a recent appraisal rating. But the authority that you mentioned is through the grant agreements and through the Part 139.
What involvement do they have with your low-T duty free conflict? Is that, and any, I go back to the general manager to ask, what's the status of that case? Has that been resolved?
It's still through, it's going through litigation, ma'am, so we can't comment on that.
And how many years has I been going through litigation, out of curiosity? Because it's been a while. I don't even remember myself.
About 10 years.
10 years now, and still going on. And what's the FAA involvement in that legal case? Are they at the table? Do they have an attorney present?
No, ma'am.
Yeah, well, I thought that. And it's still ongoing 10 years later. How much has the airport spent on that legal argument? Are you involved at all? You have your representation from your legal counsel involved in these cases?
We do have legal counsel on that, ma'am, and, and most of the, most of the fees that are being paid is not from the airport.
Okay, well, how, how much has been paid, do you know? The airport, your airport attorneys have involved in all of this?
I don't have that figure on me, ma'am. I can get back to you on that.
Well, that's just another example. I'm not saying, hey, well, the specifics of this case, but it's another, this is your, this is your YTK, this ongoing argument over these, you know, I'm sure probably the others probably thinking, thank goodness I didn't get it during COVID because I wasn't selling much of anything, but it's still ongoing. And that is a very not-so-pleasant side of this issue of interests wanting to control valuable assets that are owned by our people. So that's my word of caution and concern, because like I said, the people can unelect me if they choose to, should I run again? They don't get to directly remove you or your board. And unfortunately, we have had repeated evidence over the years, be it you, and we all want to claim we are the most ethical person. To the people of Guam, we're ethical. But, you know, unfortunately, track records don't, maybe not your specific track record, but those that have sat in your seat and some of the board members that have sat there also, those conflicts have existed. And I don't know to what level of transparency, as Senator Tello brought up, we have to get to, to where that's not an issue, and then people know that they just don't have those sideline agreements that end up determining where public assets are going. Because while we're leasing, we'd like to successfully know that those leases are clean. And I'm sure the people that in the private sector want to participate, want to make sure it's clean. Some don't because they don't trust the government, and I don't blame them. But I would be very, very cautious on long-term, things that are certainly beyond probably my lifetime, probably a lifetime of most people here, maybe except your deputy there. Value of, you know, being young and more power to you. But that's where I have a little caution, because 30 years is an awful long time for me to just say, oh, board members, you decide that. That quick meeting that you had, yeah, make sure so-and-so company get, because let's not kid ourselves, people, those influences are out there and they're circulating all the time. Doesn't matter which administration. Doesn't matter which administration. You just, you know, sometimes have to decide, is it worth it to stay or go? And can you live with that decision, or is it going to come back to haunt you? But that's my, my concern. I may, I may be open to extending a little longer, but not 30 years. Because I'll tell you, maybe you don't trust, but, you know, the people of Guam like us or not, they put us in office. We're here to represent their interests. And I'm very concerned when it comes to public assets, and only because of track record that I've seen myself, experienced myself. I voted against the original bill. The original bill that was introduced that even gave you your first five years, I was the only member of the legislature to vote against it. 15 years later, I'm at the Port Authority of Guam, and I end up having to deal with the very first decision that was made on that bill, and hundreds of thousands of dollars of ratepayer money and the continued, you know, the property ended up sitting idle and, and continued to deteriorate and was not being properly used because of ongoing legal battles. So I'm very cautious, colleagues, and I'll tell the people out there, be very cautious when you're looking at long-term agreements that are this long through this very simple process of individuals making decisions, don't have direct access to the public, because you don't. You only exist because of the authority granted to us and the governor to make the appointment and for the legislature to confirm your board members. That's the authority you have, the authority that hired you as general manager. That's an extended authority. So I have to tell you, I have reservations when we're looking at 30-year agreements of public officials that don't have direct accountability of the public making these decisions. So with that, Madam Chair, thank you for the opportunity to comment on this bill.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Speaker Chirloki, do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you. So I want to thank all of you who are here. I see many of you from the airport and of course, those on the panel. I understand your requests, but I also have concerns and I want to clarify a couple of things. So first of all, in your testimony, the paragraph that was cited earlier from one of my colleagues is that this bill would give you the authority to make rules and regs. And we don't have those in front of us today, so we don't know what kind of rules and regs you're going to come up with or what kind of board policies or procedures that the board's going to come up with either. Those are not before us. So we're kind of just, this bill would just be giving that blanket authority. And then it says, engaging in a competitive solicitation process right now because of the COVID impacts may not generate the most advantageous and favorable position for GIAA. I'm interpreting that to mean not that many are going to bid because there is no business, right? So it's going to take you a little while to promulgate the rules and regs and that coincides with your recovery period, so you have kind of some time, right? So I feel like we also have some time, right? The legislature to review this and to decide and maybe to see some of the rules and regs that you're proposing. I'm hoping that, you know, to give us some more confidence as to what exactly you're thinking to come up with that is particular to airport properties, airport industries. And I can understand that you want a slightly different process, but I'd just like to see some of the details of that. The other thing is, yeah, same thing with the policies and procedures. So the concessions are going to come up with rules and regs. And for every other rental property or every other lease at the airport, it's going to be, it says Board of Directors, Policies and Procedures. And I have respect for the Board of Directors, but I'd like to know what does this mean? Because it means to me, and it's adoption only after a 30-day public notice and comment period, meaning they can continue to make policies and procedures every 30 days. They can make it particular to one industry, one tenant, you know, proposed tenant. And I'm afraid that doesn't make it, that doesn't give notice for everybody. It doesn't make it competitive. It doesn't make it fair. It allows it, and maybe not by design, but my interpretation is that this may allow it to be very unfair where you're changing your rules every 30 days. And it's pretty much depends on who are the Board of Directors at that time, right? So even that, I would like to see, what do you propose? Let's set some basic standards that you think we can live with and maybe let's go with that. And let's adopt those as you can use these policies as opposed to the procurement law. Instead of what the bill proposes is to completely waive the procurement law, the entire procurement law waived. Second, it completely waives the, you know, all other kind of protections that have been put into statute for many years and other processes that have been put into statute for many years. And that are, you know, and pretty much it evolved to long-term leases. They want legislative approval. This was done before my time, but I can totally understand why that came about, right? And we've seen, as my colleague talks about, some of the examples of abuse that occurred in the past. And so just to protect, you guys aren't going to be there all the time, but this bill is proposing to change your enabling statutes. It's not proposing to change this temporary COVID period type of process. It's proposing to change your enabling statutes forever, meaning forever. And then all the people of Guam, we're at the whim of, you know, whoever's on the board that time, that time, whoever's the manager at that time. So, and it's waiving a big thing. It's saying, you know, even, yeah, no more legislative approval of the leases. It does, it seems to take out AG review of any leases as well by waiving the procurement law and waiving this 60114 that requires AG review and approval of these kind of contracts, these long-term contracts. I have no objection to removing municipal planning council approval for airport transactions. There's a part here too where you say that property is, the property that you gained as a result of the base relocation enclosure of Naval Air Station is required to be used for airport purposes, which means related to aeronautical operations serve as noise buffer land. And then there's this or generate revenue that contributes to the financial self-sufficiency of the airport. And that seems to me a big, huge blanket, anything. Isn't that right?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
And that's like non-aeronautical.
Right. So the airport, I want to make this clear because we've been told before that you're very restricted. They have to have aeronautical purposes, but they don't, right?
That's the priority.
I see.
Priority goes to the aeronautical.
And how do they influence you in choosing a priority over a non-priority use of that property?
Well, there's interest for a certain property that's not being, there's no one interested in a certain property and a non-aeronautical person is interested in leasing that, then we'll give that person the opportunity to-
Yeah, so everyone has opportunity and it's equal. So that's what I mean, how do you say it's priority when really it's up to the board? There's really nothing that binds you to these priorities, is that right?
That seems right.
Okay. And then in your testimony, you said this, and I guess I want to clarify this as well because we've heard this in other hearings on the airport. So no land. Part of the federal assurances that you have to make is that no land be transferred or disposed without FAA approval. Yeah, so can we just clarify that?
Yeah, that's part of our FAA assurances that we cannot dispose of land. And disposal, based on the compliance policy manual, also means leases beyond 50 years, which would be deemed a disposal in the FAA eyes. But could I also mention too, Speaker, if I could add to that, the rules and regulations would come back to the legislature through the AAA process or by enactment into law. So that draft would obviously come back here for its review and approval as well.
Okay, so FAA approval is required for leases beyond 50 years right now. Do you have any leases beyond 50 years?
No, ma'am.
50 years, 30 years?
No, ma'am.
Anything beyond five years?
No one has come in to go beyond five years. Once they know that, they see the five-year clause, most of the time it's just a letter of interest or they're looking into it. But since the five-year is a showstopper for them to invest, then that's the furthest that they go.
And we do have, Senator Titer, we had mentioned several developers, if I could add to, that CTSI has already obviously developed, DHL has developed.
Right, and how long are those terms?
As she had mentioned, I don't have them specifically.
They're long, right?
They were long terms.
And that, that's what I thought.
And they did provide aeronautical-
So there are already leases that extend beyond five years?
That were done before the change in the law.
Their grandfather.
Correct, right. And the low-T, well, the concession agreement for the large, I don't know what you call that, the large concession agreement? What is the term of that?
10.
And that is authorized, how did you get 10 there?
I believe that was prior to the law.
Prior to the law, again. So you think that a new concession, that large concession, if you entered into a new contract, it would be currently restricted to five years?
Yes.
Is that your interpretation?
And so we won't get the, we won't get the amount of people interested if it's just five years.
Yeah, typically a shorter year even for concessions, even though I know we limit here to 10. 10 is industry standard for concession contracts. And it kind of, it obviously will devalue the amount that a concession may be able to invest into the airport in terms of renovations and things like that. So five years would obviously be a bit of an impediment and a devaluing of that contract.
All right. Before I get distracted, I just want to put this on the record that I would like, if we are going to change the authority of the airport at all to mandate somewhere, and I want your assistance with this, that customs is cleared. Customs is going to be allowed to be put into the airport. Rental-free, if I could get my way, I would say rental-free. And that is something that you guys, you know, find a way to do in exchange for this huge authority that you're going to be receiving if this bill is passed. I mean, okay, one more thing. So I know there's been a lot of talk about why we need more years than five, but the law currently allows you to go beyond five, right? So as you said, there's just a special process if it's going to exceed five. And when I look at this process, it does not at all seem cumbersome to me. I mean, you keep saying, everybody's running away. These are million-dollar companies and they can't handle this process? That really concerns me. Like, there's just an additional bit of scrutiny that they have to go through and I don't understand why they won't do that. So the way I read it, an exceptional term contract requires a determination of need by the Board of Directors. They determine there's a need for an additional, something, a term that exceeds five years. They just, they vote on that, they give justification for it, and they send that to the Speaker of the Legislature. That's one. The second thing they have to do, the airport would have to publish the notice that they are soliciting any vendor to come in for a term that exceeds five years for this property. Or in other words, solicit a contract, right? Solicit for that property that you determine the need for. You publish that in the paper and then that's all the law requires pretty much. I mean, you guys make whatever contract you want at that point. Then you send the contract to the legislature. We didn't determine the terms. We had no part in it or the legislature has no part in any of it. We only see it at the end. And the legislature is required to have a hearing within 60 days. So they put even a timeline on the legislature, 60 days, have a public hearing so the public knows what this long-term contract is about, what the terms are that the legislature, I mean, the airport came up with. And that's it. And then, of course, it's subject to legislature approval. But I've seen very rarely contracts get denied down here because the airport would have done an excellent job in justifying the need for a long term, just as you're doing today. And in particular, you know, justifying why these terms are good for the airport and the people of Guam. You've done this all the time. So I don't know. For me, you know, I still have faith in that process. It just brings huge transparency for the people and still respects the board's authority to determine its own terms, right? Determine its own needs and do it on a case-by-case basis, you know, hopefully. And this publication of a notice or solicitation to be mandated, some competitiveness, right? At least if there's such a thing. It depends how you write it, right? You could say we only want anyone interested in building a hangar for skydiving, right? So that would be very narrow. That brings me to my next question. So we have some testimony, one is from Asia-Pacific Airlines, right? So they're in favor of the bill. But I want to know, what impact does this bill have on airlines? What, does this affect how you partner with airlines?
Yeah, Speaker, there's no impact to the agreement portion of the airline. So on the bill, it just amended, the only portion that is amended as it relates to agreements with airlines, specifically in what the amended portion of the bill is, is just changing the name of AWB to GIAA, I believe. So there's no impact specifically that the bill does. But I think to the previous points that you may have made as it relates to, as for example, customs, I know that there's been a continued, and I've been at the legislature requesting the same. And so I'm trying to understand why, you know, obviously there are reasons why customs and other regulatory agencies have to pay. And there are FAA assurances that require the payment, even of TSA, that is required to be there to make payment of, based on the rates and charges of the airport. And so in terms of customs having to pay, it's just as part of federal regulations for us to have to charge anyone that's in the airport in terms of using the space in the terminal building. So that's one of the main reasons why customs is continuing to pay. But over the last several years, we've made adjustments to the space being utilized by customs and then also the rates that they pay. So they, just even three, three and a half years ago, they pay less than what they paid three and a half. Today, they pay less than what they paid three and a half years ago. And we continue to try to make sure that, you know, in terms of other space that customs uses, so the amount of rent that customs does pay isn't specifically only what is paid for the terminal building space. It's also, they have office spaces in other buildings that we cover and they reimburse for. They have also space for their K-9 unit that's being rented and leased on the south side of the airport. So all of those spaces, office space, cargo space, and then the inspection space at the terminal building and the K-9 unit in the back, those all contribute to the rent paid by customs to the airport.
Right, but they're necessary, right? Unless you have, I don't understand why the FAA is involved in that. See, we just established that the FAA does not control who you rent to, what your rental amounts are going to be inside your terminal, right? And yet they control, when it comes to customs, that doesn't make any sense to me. Why don't you rent it to customs then, like you do for the other concessions and give them a great deal, you know?
Yeah, so I think with customs, for example.
Dollar a year.
Yeah, so concessions obviously pay a premium, right? So they pay more than what customs and TSA and other places pay.
Yeah, but it's not controlled by FAA. What you charge your concessions is not controlled by the FAA, correct?
No, but what we pay as the floor, right? What everyone has to pay is based on the rates and charges. And therefore, customs, TSA, all these other tenants, airlines, they pay what is based on the rates and charges. And FAA requires us to ensure that if we're going to be reducing any rates, that it's across the board based on that same type of tenant. And so if we were to, for example, reduce rates for customs, then that would then have to reduce rates for every single other tenant that's of similar stature in the terminal building, which then that would potentially increase.
And who is that? Who in your terminal is of similar stature as customs, except for maybe airport fire, right? Airport fire, you guys cover completely.
Yeah, airport fire is a division of the airports.
Airport police, yes.
And they're a division as well.
I know, and that's what I'm saying. I am so sure that you guys can find a way to do that. I'm just not convinced that there's no way, especially if the FAA does not control your concessions, right?
Yeah, concessions and customs are two separate types of, I guess, stature.
Right, well, that's because you've designated it that way, right? So if I was customs and I go bid to be a concession and come up to an agreement with you when we waive all these procurement laws, they can come up, they can make an agreement with you for a dollar a year, right? Anyways, I'm just saying, please, find a way. So the answer to the question of what, how does this affect airlines? None? So why do you think they're in support of the bill? How does this affect them?
Yeah, Asia-Pacific Airlines is a tenant of the airport.
Pardon?
They're a tenant of the airport. And they also provide cargo services.
Cargo, they leasing cargos, another building for cargo space? So they are going to be a tenant?
Yes.
Okay, and what about, but not airline services, right? Not impacted, right? You bid those out a different way, is that right?
Airline services?
Well, you know, allowing them to use-
Yeah, so if there's any airlines that are interested in flying to the airport, there's a process that we go through, not only the business permit side for the airport itself, but also, you know, landing permits and things like that.
Let me rephrase the question. Does this bill impact like United Counter Space? Does it, does it impact, are you soliciting for those?
No.
No, right? That's a totally different agreement. This bill's not going to affect airlines? Okay, that's what I wanted to confirm with that. And the other one is, yeah, so we have a letter, this one is the, they want a hangar. Yeah, I'm curious why they just didn't go through that exceptional term contract. It's very specific aviation purpose. Oh, the la- the last thing before I forget is this um, so you have a provision in here. That says to ex- that this bill would authorize you. To me, this is the only real time sensitive provision in the bill. The rest could wait and be vetted more, but this one says. This bill. Uh, authorizes the the board to negotiate extensions of its current concession agreements for up to an additional three years from the end of the then current term. So who does this affect? This affects the big concession, the duty, the.
Yeah, our current concessions are food and beverage, uh specialty retail, car rentals, advertising.
All right, and didn't you give them um with some of the A R P money or other money breaks on their rent?
Yeah, so the uh Chrisa and A R P uh both provided about $2 million of concession relief. Uh, so those were passed on uh to the to the concessions.
Right, so I'm I mean, so you're trying to do this as a kind of alleviate some suffering for them because the business was low. Extend them out for three more years, right? And I don't know, I just want to think about that because I know that you already did extend some relief to them. I I don't know.
Speaker, if I may, it's a cut, does a couple of things. It is um, yes, as you mentioned, there there was assistance provided. But this is also um market specific in that the recovery. This is also market specific in that the recovery and the ability for concessionaires to um to earn their returns. Uh, as a pandemic, as the traffic recovers would um fall within this time period. So we're not saying it's uh an exact three years, it's it's up to three years. But that's to allow for um, you know, recovery during the, as the market recovers itself.
Okay, so um, the other thing is current concessions are limited to five years. Except for the big one that was grandfathered in for 10 years, is that what you're saying? All right, so and aren't they all full? They're currently full, right? Or they were prior to the pandemic. You didn't have a problem soliciting people as tenants in in the airport itself, did you?
You know, when we opened the international arrival corridor, um, that opened up a lot of space in the concourse.
Wasn't that just done during COVID?
Yes.
Right, so I'm talking about before COVID, there was no problem getting concessions into the airport, even with a five year limit. Right, and and the big concession, even with a 10 year limit, we've got a huge dispute continues to go on. They're fighting for that 10 year.
Yeah, before before COVID uh hit, uh, because of the international arrivals corridor was not done. There was limited space in as far as the food and beverage concessioners and other concessioners. But now that that it has it open, it it widens all the uh possibilities of concessions throughout the uh departure area.
Yeah, all right, well, from from how it looks to me is you were very successful in getting, you know, the name, those luxury brands. Uh, food, all the other concessions, despite the five year limitation inside the the terminal.
Yes, but but also Senator uh with the five year limitation, if you, if you, we continue to do that. Um, all these uh concession ears will not, they won't invest as much as they would uh if it was a longer uh term period. Uh, so the the type of investments that they'll do for their food concession ears or their food and beverage, or even their their um retail. Uh, their investment will not be as great.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Speaker. Senator Virgil.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The law that uh created the five year limit on leases, I think that was passed around 2013. Do you guys know if that's correct? Anyone, any members of the panel recall how long that law has been in effect?
It's after 20, after the uh, it was done after the uh, the big concession era uh um contract that was done. So I would say 2014, 2015, maybe. It was Tom, uh Senator Tom Adam.
Yeah.
I think it was Public Law 32 dash 40, it's in the 2013. Public Law 32 dash 40. I'm sorry. Oh, um, it's Title V, Chapter V.
Okay, actually, I've uh thanks to Senator Torres here has helped me look it up. And it shows that this law was 2013, yeah. So it was passed in 2013, so it's been about nine years.
Yes.
Since that law has been in effect, right? So my question is um, in those nine years. No lease has been entered into that's over five years long, correct? Except for previous leases who are grandfathered in because prior to 2013, they already had a 10 year lease or whatever the term was, right? That law also allows for, as the speaker was mentioning, a process whereby if you want a longer lease than five years. You have to go through a longer process where you come before the legislature for ultimate approval of that longer than five year lease, correct? In the nine years that that law has been in effect, how many companies have gone through that process uh with you guys at the airport? To to seek a longer than five year lease?
So the board has done a determination of need and uh previous boards have done a determination of need on land. We've gone through that process, but uh for one reason or another, we haven't had any uh lease longer than five years. Um, for whatever reasons that the private developers um don't want to go through that process, they, we've hadn't had anything.
So in the nine years that this law has been in effect, not a single private developer or company has attempted. To get a longer than five year lease through this process, this legislative approval process?
To my knowledge, no, I've not seen.
So in other words, since the law was passed, it's prevented anyone essentially from going for a longer than five year lease. No one's even attempted the process.
Letter of interest is.
Letter of interest and it dies there?
That's right.
Uh, so if there's been some letters of interest, I'm assuming that there's been some discussions. With whatever companies were interested with those letters of interest, they must have come back to the board at some point and said, you know what? We're not going to go forward with this. Did any of them ever indicate why? Is there anything you guys have dealt with where they've said, look, uh, we were interested, but we don't want to go forward with this approval process to get a longer than five year lease?
I have had companies that um, you know, has discussed and talked to us about it. And uh, once we give them the uh, what the requirements are as far as the uh going beyond five years. A lot of them, the responses, and this is all through meetings and not not in writing, but uh they've says, we'll reattack this interest. Once this law has been amended or once uh the five year restriction has been lifted to a more. Favorable uh uh favorable years so that they can invest.
So basically, they just don't see, it's not, they don't believe it's feasible for them or it's not um. It's not something they want to waste their time with going through, is that what they're saying essentially? They're saying that, hey, there's a five year cap on how long we can lease it. Uh, we don't want to go through this entire process of approval to the legislature. Have they said why? Is there something specific why they don't like to go through the legislative approval process? And any indication to any of you?
I not not, uh, they have not uh given us uh the reasons why and and stuff, but.
Is it just the juice is not worth the squeeze?
Senator, I think, I mean, anecdotally, because um, you know, it's not every single developer that's uh, you know, submitted some interest in developing any. Parts or or parts of the airport. Um, but I guess if if there's a developer that's going to be spending that much money on uh developing a specific property. Uh, the uncertainty obviously around what that process entails, it might be one thing. Uh, since I'm not sure if there's been uh situations, not at the airport, where a developer wa- went through the process. Because I know that um it was mentioned that there is a process here. But uh in terms of submitting the determination of need, I know when I was at G I D A, that was done uh for certain properties. And then going through that process at G I D A, uh especially for specific lands, I can't remember which ones, which properties. But um, you know, in terms of uh what that, you know, after that process, it's it's really unclear why. Why developers might not necessarily want to, but it might be the uncertainty of what that process entails. Does it include uh proprietary information possibly? Um, you know, that might be exposed and then the uncertainty that that will get approved. I mean, those types of things, uh especially if there are competitors involved and we're talking about. Um, as the executive manager manager mentioned, uh such as a Vietnam based airline that might want to um, you know. Perform some uh maintenance repair and operation type services and hangar facilities. Um, you know, there's obviously a competitive uh nature to that. And the potential for exposure of potentially proprietary information is probably an impediment. And and you add the uncertainty to that, but that might also be, they haven't expressed that directly to us. We are just assuming what could be the issue. Um, but we also are probably in this time of COVID and there are, the the industry is really, is really changing. Um, you know, airlines are looking, especially with, you know, the inability to do certain types of operations in countries that are restrictive right now. Or may not have a good relationship with the U S. Um, they want to move, they want to move things to places such as Guam and other areas. Uh, and we're not only the ones, we're we're competing with other places where this money could be spent. And so if there's other places that they could go through a certain process, uh they'll go to those, they'll go to those places. And so, you know, it's it's unclear how um how long certain, you know, developers are, um, you know, will wait or will want to. You know, have an uncertain type of process. Uh, but you know, we we're just hoping that uh if if we're able to, you know, get through this point. That we can increase the economic activity of the airport. Because as the FAA and the federal government start, continues to invest in federal uh federal funds into the airport. Uh, we want to take advantage of those as the uh our our chairman mentioned. They're investing in cargo aprons, they're investing in um, you know, our runway rehab, they're investing in parking aprons. And if we don't have the ability to get private activity to utilize these facilities. And then also take advantage of all the other property on the south ramp, for example. That where we might want to, you know, invest or provide or find public private partnerships with uh other entities that might want to maybe. Put a solar farm out there, for example. We just can't do it with uh the what whatever reasons developers have for not wanting to go through what might be an uncertain process. So um, we want to leverage all the like, the the Inflation Reduction Act has a lot of private sector related. Tax credits and benefits to be able to do sustainable renewable related electrification related projects. And I think on the airport, there's a lot of opportunity for private developers to be able to take advantage of those tax benefits and those other. Uh, benefits that the Inflation Reduction Act provides uh to be able to help service all of our tenants. So, you know, I think in terms of what what the impediments seem to be, it it's probably, you know. We haven't received anything specific, but those are kind of the assumptions on why there just hasn't been a lot of interest um in longer term investments.
Could it be the timelines involved too? I mean, it's, it would take longer to go through the legislative process than than this new process you're proposing?
Sure, Senator, if I may add, um, during my, during my tenure, um, I'm not aware, we haven't had any extended leases or uh gone through the the process that provides for that with the legislature. But um, you know, there there is an element of risk. And so when you ask whether or not the juice is worth the squeeze, um, most private investors will, you know, they have, they can pick and choose where they place their their time and resources. And sometimes that is an expensive opportunity to just get to a process that you're uncertain about the outcome versus, you know, putting your capital somewhere else and that's very certain. And with respect to the term that we're asking about, you know, the these are industry standards. And so when you have a retail concession uh with a term of 10 years, that's the standard in the in the industry. But also when you're investing in hard infrastructure, um, you know, these, these aren't little uh cottages, you know, on a on a raw piece of land. Uh, on the hillside, these are significant capital infrastructure. And, you know, capital planning would require somewhere, you know, within the the 30 year, maybe max 25 year range, um, just as a a capital recovery program. And I think what um Senator Tadej we had mentioned earlier, she she listed a bunch of potentials during a previous engagement uh and discussion. I think there was probably about $40 million that she mentioned. So what what's really, uh, what we're really talking about is is the the opportunities that we don't get, right? We know what we received. And we know what revenues we're receiving from what structure is in place for leases that are allowable to five years. What we don't know are the opportunities that we've missed as a result of um not accommodating long term investors. And as the deputy had mentioned, there is a lot of money uh being directed towards infrastructure. For sustainable environment and sustainability of of airports. And so we see that as an opportunity to not only diversify um, you know, the business of the airport today. But for the long term, as well as providing jobs and opportunities for other industry that today isn't there. Because for whatever reason, somebody who has the capital doesn't decide to invest it here. So we don't know what we don't know, but we do know what the lease or what the current structure has limited us to, right? Thank you.
Thank you. So the industry standard for concessions is 10 years. And then for major capital improvement projects, what's the industry standard, is it 30 years? Like what's being proposed in?
Uh, that's what's in the, that's what's in the bill as proposed. But I can tell you that in in my knowledge on heavy duty capital infrastructure, whether it be large steel. Uh, in this case, you might be looking at a a hangar building. Those are generally between, you know, 30, 20 to 30 years, 25 to 30 years.
Right, makes sense. Kind of sounds like uh, you know, when you're taking out a major loan for a major construction, a lot of times. Or whatever financing mechanism that's used, it's, that's usually the range, right? 20 to 30 years. So it sounds like you're saying that um, we've missed a lot of opportunities over the last nine years. From potential investments in capital improvements and infrastructure that uh haven't materialized because of the five year. Cap on the lease terms. Is that safe to say?
Yep.
So it sounds like we're leaving a lot of money on the table.
Yep.
Sorry, I keep using different phrases.
Well, I think to add to your your cliches, I think as Michael Jordan put it, you miss 100% of the shots you don't take.
There, I love that one. I actually love, hey, you know me, I like basketball. Yeah, that is uh one of my concerns as well, and I'm glad to hear from you guys um clarify some of the that information with respect to had. Whether or not someone has actually gone through the process of trying to get a longer term lease. That's uh one reason why I'm a co sponsor of the measure. I think we do need to begin looking at how do we get more investments um into the airport? Uh, I know, for example, uh many years ago, when I was uh just a young reporter, they had sent me to uh New York. It was uh when United was owned by Continental, they were doing this big unveiling of their new terminal in Newark, New Jersey. So Continental invested in building a terminal. And, you know, I was a young reporter, I was like, oh, wow, why, you know, would they invest? Why'd they invest all this money in the terminal? Obviously, it's because they must have had like a 30 year lease to invest in that terminal. So they could make their money back somehow, right? So through whatever, you know, I'm sure there's other parts of that deal that was in there, but whatever the mechanism was, it's obviously a long term lease. And I believe they still uh call it the, or actually Continental became United now, right? So it must be the United Terminal, I'm assuming. I haven't been back there since, but it was a huge thing. They were talking about the, I believe at the time it was a. It was a huge investment. I can't remember how much it was off the top of my head, but it was a huge investment that they had made into constructing a whole uh terminal. At Newark, New Jersey's uh airport. So. Are those the type of things we're looking at doing with this type of legislation, investing in major pieces of infrastructure like that?
If I if I could add, um, yes, and thank you for the question. I think the 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 opportunities for us to experience that level of investment um would be provided in in legislation such as this or, you know, approval of this. But as a traveler, and everyone has to travel, if you look at a place like Newark. And this, the the types of investment that were put into New York, Newark, not just by the airlines, but if you look at the concessions, right? And and the experience you have as a as a traveler. And that's something that we want for Guam. I mean, we have um something to be very proud of at the airport. That terminal is um, you know, it it is the uh, the shining terminal in the region. We want Guam and the airport to be an example for the rest of the region, not only in its facility and its assets, but the services and the experiences that customers or the traveling public experiences at our airport. And so I think, you know, you look at the concessions in a place like Newark and that's a sim, you know, it's a, it signifies that there is a a partnership between the private sector and and the authority to. Uh, to provide that that level of. a, you know, a good cup of coffee, and you have options, and you have very good options to do that. And we want to be able to provide that and invite people to invest in the terminal facility, the concessionaires, the food and beverage, so that we can experience that ourselves as travelers, because we do it in other places where we travel, too.
Absolutely. I'm glad you brought that up. Whenever I'm in other airports, sometimes I'm just blown away at the amount of stuff they have in the airport. I mean, like, it's, you have entire shopping malls inside of airports, right? And so much business and so much commerce happening inside those airports. So, and Mr. Hernandez, I do like what you were mentioning about when you have these investors, they have all this money. We have competition, so they're going to look at us and say, oh, that's got a five-year cap. Maybe I won't invest over there in Guam. I don't want to go through all these hoops, jump through all these hoops, waste all of this time, and then just get denied anyway in the end. I'm going to go over to Hawaii's airport, where they don't have a five-year cap, and I'm just going to invest in that airport instead, or whatever other airport is in the region that they're looking at.
Yeah, we've sat around the table, trying to understand what the impediments are. We've mentioned uncertainty, the potential for what parts of a negotiation is made public before it actually gets approved, but also in the process of a developer, as we've kind of talked about at the airport, you know, how much money and time they invest at certain points of a negotiation period. And so when a, when a developer, or if a developer comes up to us and has a proof of concept, or some, you know, estimate of how much they want to spend, and the, and the details of the project and all that, you know, that might not take a lot of money to have that, but when you start getting into negotiation and spending a lot more and investing a lot more in that part, and then having to go through another, what would be considered uncertain part, there is already investment made during that period, and, you know, I think, you know, that might also be an impediment. So uncertainty, and then how much developers may invest in an opportunity, especially here on Guam, up to the point of finishing a negotiation with the airport and having something such as a draft contract ready, and then having to bring that to another process that might require, you know, the sharing of what would be considered proprietary information, and having put in some investment and money into that, up to that process of getting people to come out, look at the site, the facility and things like that, or the land, and investing resource and understanding the, you know, the, the opportunities on Guam and the requirements. So that's, seems, we've talked about it before, that that also could be an issue, because they have to invest time up to a certain point, and then get into another process that might have an uncertain ending, or might share things that may be a bit proprietary to that negotiation. And so, you know, I just wanted to add that, too. But also Bill 342-36, well, you mentioned offerings at the airport. That'll allow us to improve the offerings that we currently have and expand them by setting up these authorities for promulgating rules and regulations for competitively soliciting for concessions, which includes food and beverage. So we want to improve. We know we need to improve, and we're really thankful for our, our current concessions that have weathered through the worst of the pandemic, but we do want to further improve for the traveling public, so that yourself and any of us that may find ourselves traveling through the terminal have a place for your children to play, for example. I know that those, we've had focus groups and things like that regarding what could be in the new parts of the terminal that have been reopened because of the international rivals corridor, but there's a lot of space there that has a lot of potential, and it's not just going to be focused in the center area where the specialty retail and the food and beverage, there's other spaces that have been reopened on the east and the west side of the terminal that we really want to take advantage of. And so we're making small improvements. COVID-19, obviously, has impacted operations and finances, and we want to continue to improve, and I think, we think this bill really will kind of move us toward that goal of improving the passenger experience for all of the customers at the airport.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. I'm glad you brought up time, because time is money. That's another good cliche, right? But I'm all out of time, so I hope that we can pass this bill in good time, so we can get more money for the people of Guam. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Rogel. Senator Tadejui has one more question.
Just a couple more. I was just looking at something earlier. Again, thank you. I promise I won't belabor this. Mr. Director, were you able to take this bill and vet it through your attorney?
Yes, ma'am. I mean, numerous times.
Okay. My concern here is that the bill that I introduced, well, both bills that I introduced to try and extend the lease timeframe, I was, in my bill, it talks about Chapter V. Well, let's go back. Let's go to page five of the bill, so you can follow along there. Okay. It says notwithstanding, and then any provisions including not limitations, 5 GCA, Chapter V, and 21 GCA, Section 6012, 60114. Are they interpreting that it's all of Chapter V GCA? Because in the legislation that I introduced, I particularly spoke about Chapter V Title V, Section 5217A, and this is where the law was created to, to only have it for five years. So I understand by putting this in your, in the legislation, notwithstanding, but does it also clearly indicate Section 25, I mean, 5217?
Yes, I think I could take that question. I think with regards to Section 5127 of Chapter V Title V.
Right.
So although we are in the bill, Section 2 requiring, or putting a notwithstanding provision on that specific section, if you look further down on the bill, it does read, and this was on purpose, obviously, it does read that when we go, so instead of following any provision in the procurement code, and the executive manager's testimony, we mentioned that the procurement code, we see it as the, for the expenditure of government funds, and so the expenditure-related contracts, and so we're generating revenue with these contracts, these concession contracts. So even though there's a notwithstanding clause under Chapter V Title V, if you look further down on the bill, the rules and regulations will then govern, govern, revenue-generating contracts.
Okay. So shouldn't it say something, notwithstanding any other provisions of law, including without limitations, all of Chapter V GCA? Or 5 GCA, Chapter V, instead of just indicating without limitations? Well, it was just, I want to make it clear that that particular section is covered. So if you can take that back to your attorney, just to clean that section up, to make sure that Section 5217 would be changed, at least for the airport, you know, in that section.
And just to be clear, we're not trying to skirt any procurement law.
Right, yeah.
The rules and regulations will, which will obviously come back to this body for a further review, that will be supplanting or replacing what is considered in the procurement statute, because there is a bit of a question and uncertainty as how Chapter V Title V applies to revenue-generating contracts, because from our perspective, it seems that Chapter V Title V is for expenditure contracts. And so as an example, if you're doing a bid for food and beverage, Chapter V Title V would say the lowest bid, but then a revenue-generating concession, such as a food and beverage, would be the highest bid. And so what we're trying to do is set a specific type of competitive solicitation process through a rules and regulations promulgation process. It comes back here, obviously, for review, and, and so that's, we're replacing that with something that's more specific to revenue-generating contracts.
Okay.
And how to, how to competitively solicit that.
Okay. So that, that leads me to the next question with regards to that. If, if you're willing to do the, through the AAA process on the concession, why can't the policies and procedures for the long-term leases also be promulgated in accordance to administrative rules and laws for the long-term leases?
I think, I think in terms of the policies and procedures, I mean, there's so, there's many different types of arrangements as it relates to the use of airport facilities and properties, and so I do know that we have current non-airline lease policies that we typically conform to already, and so there are those that we have with, currently in the airport that we typically follow.
Well, right now, you're, you're looking at, you know, the concessions, right? Going through the AAA process, promulgating rules and regulations, right? And it was mentioned earlier that we're not all going to be here, you know, we're going to have to trust the next group of people, and, you know, I, I know you guys for many years, and, you know, I do have that trust in you, but the next group coming in to follow those same guidelines and being honest and transparent and accountable. By promulgating rules and regulations for long-term leases based on, you know, what the Board sees fit, and looking at the environment out there for investors, you know, to be more investor-friendly, but yet transparent, rules and regs can be put in place, even after you're gone, that it can be followed. So that's something I want you to think about, too, as well, moving forward. I do understand, you know, the investment in, in any of these individuals coming to, to wanting a long-term lease. I mean, marketing, you mentioned, Mr. Director, the amount of money they put in marketing, the furnitures and fixtures that they put out, you know, and the more elaborate stand they put out, you know, they're hopefully, they're going to attract people to come in and buy in their little Coca-Cola area, Colosac area of items for sale versus, you know, the neighbor beside them. So we understand that there's a huge investment made by these individuals, no doubt. I was hoping GIDEA would be here to testify. Let's, they've got like 10 days, you know, to bring, so hopefully you can call, call them up and ask them why they were not here, so they can provide some insight, too, and maybe some influence on this legislation, because I know they were very interested on their, their side, too, as well. I think lastly is looking forward to working with the author of this legislation and, and to make sure that all those things, who, people who have concerns up here, the senators who have concerns up here, that we can provide that, that type of transparency and comfort in, and knowing that the airport is going to be fully vent out every investor coming in, and provide, most importantly, fair trade, fairness in any contract that's brought forward, you know, and allow that free, that competition being fair. So other than that, I appreciate your time this morning, and, and it's good to see everyone here, and I just wanted to shout out to my, my Uncle Don, who's over there, and his daughter Deb. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes the questions for Bill Number 342-36. I want to thank our panel who's here today to testify. Thank you to the GIA team and to all of our Board of Directors and the staff who came in support of the bill today. We will continue to accept testimonies to the committee for the next several days. You can send those testimonies to Office of Senator Shelton at GuamLegislature.org, or drop them here to the Guam Congress Building in Haguenya, across the Haguenya Cathedral. And that concludes our hearing for today. The time now is 10:05 a.m. So do us some mercy, everyone, and be safe.